Okay, why don't we call to order and take roll call?
Here.
Nothing.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, why don't we stand? We'll have a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Notice, the notice requirements of the public, of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Asbury Park Press in the coaster and filed in the, in the office of the township clerk on July 21st, 2023. There's an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. No smoking. No new cases will, will be started after 10:00 PM and no new testimony taken after 10:30. In addition, the applicant will be limited to 45 minutes of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean Community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon Files and Channel 77 on Cable Vision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a phone call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Okay, so first off, I think for the minutes, we're going to move that to another day to approve those, right? Now, we're going to have a resolution memorializing the Ocean Relco LLC 2118, Highway 35, Block 301, Lots 2 and 3. I think our attorney Mark sent out the resolution and the writing of that. So can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. I think we can do a roll, a call on that.
Eiliya?
Yes.
Nothing?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so we have a new case, 1414 to 1416, South Roller Road LLC Block 182, Lots 1 and 2, Zone I-1, 114 Roller Road LLC Lot 1, Roller Road LLC Lot 2. The applicant is proposing to remove an existing light industrial building on Lot 1 and construct a new addition to the existing warehouse on Lot 2, combining the two lots into one site. Side yard setbacks requirements of a minimum of 100 feet where an industrial zone abuts a residential zone. The proposed side setback is 50 feet, maximum lot coverage, maximum lot coverage, a maximum lot coverage of 54% of building, of buildable lotable area allowed. Proposed coverage is 152 point, 153.2% of building lotable allowed. So who's here for the applicant? Oh, Ms. Krimko, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Weinstein, members of the board. Jennifer Krimko here on behalf of the applicant. And just by a very broad stroke, the subject property is currently a warehouse owned by a company by Jay Cohen. He has his health and beauty distribution company there and has been in the township as a commercial resident for about eight years now the building was put in. And adjacent to that was a manufacturing, smaller building, a manufacturing building, which was quite active with a lot of truck traffic and deliveries up against the residential. We're actually proposing to take that out, eliminate any of the activity next to the residential, and put the building in that location. Well, we do need the buffer requirement, and I know it sounds like a lot, as you're going to see from the exhibit, we're no closer to it than the existing building and existing parking is. And we're right in line with all of the other buildings along, along that roadway. The coverage, as you know, is a function of having to deduct out the buffer requirement. And when you deduct out the buffer requirement, you have a buildable lot area of something very small. I have with me tonight Dave Bash, and I have with me Dave Collins, the engineer and the architect. And Mr. Cohen is here in case there are any operational questions.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I just want the record to show that Mr. Mont-
I was going to say that, yeah. Yeah, so Julia Samonte has recused herself from this due to the fact that she has relatives that are involved in the application.
Oh, okay.
She wasn't being rude or anything, she just wanted to-
No, 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 I know, and I think, I think her father may have done an original survey on this one.
Yes, yes.
So if I could just move some items into evidence, and we do have some things to hand out as well. A1 will be the topographic survey by Charles Samont dated 10/23/23. A2 is the survey of property by Nelson Engineering dated 8/4/21. A3 is the site plan prepared by Nelson Engineering revised through 1/9/24. A4 are the architectural plans prepared by David Feldman, not David Feldman at all, Felts Architecture. I saw the F-E-L, sorry about that, Dave. Dave Collins. A5 is, and I'll, I'll hand these out as soon as I mark them in, is an aerial of the subject property showing the encumbrance of the 150-foot buffer as well as an outline of the existing, I'm sorry, the, the showing the existing conditions with an outline of the proposed building to show you that it's in line. A6 is a color rendered landscape plan. A7, just because it was submitted, is the drainage report dated January 12th, 2024. And lastly, A8 is a color rendering of sheet A101 of the architectural plans just to show what the building's going to look like. So I can pause for a moment and start the process of handing these out.
And Mr. Chairman, while we're doing that, if I could enter in the board's exhibits?
Yep.
Let me sit down for that, so I have to take notes.
Oh, my apologies.
Dave, can I ask you to hand these out?
Take your time.
Well, we don't, we don't have to do things in parallel, we can, we can do things sequentially.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
B1 is the crime prevention report dated March 13th, 2024. B2, Traffic Safety Bureau report dated March 5th, 2024. B3, Code Enforcement Report dated March 4th, 2024. B4, Environmental Commission Report dated March 21st, 2024. B5, Fire Marshal Report dated March 5th, 2024. B6, Department of Public Works dated March 5th, 2024. B7, Board Planner Report dated March 17th, 2024. B8, Board Engineer Report dated March 18th, 2024.
Okay, great.
And I did have, just so the board is aware, we did have the benefit of coming in for a concept meeting before we made this application with Ben and Jim. And as you'll, I think you'll hear from the reports, I think we hit most of their concerns and, you know, obviously we'll offer you the testimony as to the rest.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that we, I saw the, I think we all got the reports and saw some of the concerns and some of the things they wanted to have clarification on. So maybe it'd be good if, if you could start, maybe just give us an overview of what's, what's going on here and what we're trying to accomplish, and that would get us on the same page.
Soon as, soon as Vanna's done handing everything out, I'll have him swear in.
Can I swear in the board professionals?
Sure.
Okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Can you please state your full name and your title?
James Higgins, Board Planner.
Ben Matlag, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
All right, Dave, if you want to put up, let's start with the aerial. And again, this is David Bash, he's the Vice President of Nelson Engineering, Certified Landscape Architect, and we're submitting him in that capacity. Or not submitting him, I should say, we're presenting him in that capacity. He's not going to stay here for you, he's going to go home to his family.
Did you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you please state your full name and spell your last for the record?
It's David Bash, B-O-E-S-C-H, Nelson Engineering Associates, 444 Neptune Boulevard, Neptune, New Jersey.
Thanks, Dave. So Dave, starting with what we moved in as A5, which is the aerial, just kind of orient the board as to where we are, what's around us, and show how the exhibit, what the, what the lines on the exhibit represent.
Okay, sure, referring to the aerial exhibit. The subject property is located on the northeast corner, the intersection of Rose Avenue and South Roller Road in the light industrial zone. The property contains two lots, both occupied with appropriately use, appropriate uses for the light industrial zone, the existing warehouse facility on Lot 2, and the manufacturing facility on Lot 1. Around the subject property to the west and the north are residential lots located in the R3 zone. And the existing properties to the east and south are light industrially zoned as well. You can see that the, both the lots are currently improved with their respective buildings and parking areas with a vegetated buffer present between the uses on Lot 1 and the residential properties to the north. The various lines, clearly the property itself is outlined in yellow. There is a, an orange dashed line which represents the zone boundary. It follows along the rear lines of the residential properties to the north and down the center line of South Roller Road, and then on the southern line of the residential properties to the west. The blue line indicates the required 150-foot buffer from an industrial use to a residential zone. So you can see that Lot 1 in particular almost completely falls within the required buffer. And the subject property, or Lot 2, approximately a third of the lot falls within the required buffer.
And before we go on to the, to the impact, essentially we have to deduct the buffer from our gross lot area to establish our buildable lot area. So our buildable lot area is the gross lot area less 25% off the top, and then also less everything within that blue line?
Correct. The, the existing lot area without any deductions is 110,561 square feet. After we make the appropriate deductions of buffer and the 25% required reduction, the buildable lot area becomes 31,126 square feet. So roughly 30% is what we're left with.
So we're losing 70%. And then as we look along Rose Avenue, I know there's only two lots shown and a portion of a third. All of those buildings are within that buffer and the other improvements in parking areas as well. That's how that industrial park was developed.
Correct. The industrial park was approved by subdivision in 1968 before the current zoning standards were in place. The residential zones to the east, I'm sorry, to the west and the north were established by major subdivisions in 19... I've got it written down here somewhere. 1994 and 1998. So there was 20 years at least since the time that these properties were developed to the time the residences came into existence.
Okay, and the red line is essentially the footprint of our proposed building?
Correct. That outlines the, the building edge. In the course of the conceptual design of the project, what we were trying to do is minimize the extension of disturbance in the area. And as you can tell, that the line of the proposed building pretty much coincides with the existing area of development of the property.
And Dave, also, under the current plan, the, under the current situation, the manufacturing building is much smaller than what we're proposing. But their parking area and their truck loading and the activity is actually bigger and close, much closer to the residences than what we're proposing.
Correct. They, they do have a lot of activity, particularly in the, in their eastern yard, which contributes to, shall we say, the normal conditions we associate with industrial to the noises associated with the activity of the site. So by this proposal, by providing only the traditional activities on the western side, we've eliminated the sounds that might emanate from those activities along the buffers to the north.
Okay, and speaking about now what we're proposing, moving on to the, to the next, next exhibit, we're essentially maintaining that buffer line, correct? Maybe losing one or, one or two trees along that northern property line, and we're supplementing it with multiple additional large evergreens?
That is correct. I mean, we do, there is a demolition entry removal plan as part of A3, which does note, there are a couple of trees that we're proposing to take down. But again, we are supplementing the landscaping with evergreen trees, which most of them right now are deciduous. So that will enhance the buffer that's there. Plus, we also have received comments from Mr. Higgins regarding establishing a double staggered row of evergreen trees, and we are inclined to do that to satisfy his concerns.
Okay, and in the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, before we start going into what we're doing, there's a unique situation which is not uncommon to what also happens by the fireman's field, not fireman's field, the, the-
Yes.
Baseball fields.
Yeah.
Is that there's parking spaces that are partially on our property and partially in the right of way.
Correct. South Roller Road is a dead end road except for an emergency vehicle access route to the north from South Roller Road to the roadways to the north. But for the most part, for the general public, it is a dead end road.
So the only people or cars that would be coming here would have been visiting our site or the adjacent manufacturing site. And if this is approved, then only the people coming to our site-
That is correct.
Would be attending there.
And one of the choices for the selection of the loading area was that is the general area where the access aisles are for both the existing facility and, both existing facilities. So that's why we placed the loading area.
Because essentially that area has had the activity, and we're just keeping the activity in that same area?
That is correct.
Albeit less activity because it's just the three loading zones as opposed to everybody coming in and out that way?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and I know the architect will speak to the building itself, but just if you could generally speak to the building and now the site layout and the other improvements?
Sure. Well, the site layout is fairly simple, as you can tell, that we, we don't have extensive parking areas around all sides of the building. We are focusing our proposed parking out along South Roller Road because since we have established a pavement width out there, it seemed environmentally... What's the word I'm looking for?
Conservative.
Thank you. To reutilize that, repurpose that pavement area for the purposes of providing maneuvering space for the proposed parking, the 23 spaces that are proposed along South Roller Road. Sidewalks are being provided as well as barrier-free parking spaces and appropriate barrier-free access routes to the various building entrances. For the purposes of satisfying or trying to, attempting to satisfy the ordinance parking requirement, we have shown the Green Bank parking area located to the east side of the proposed addition, Green Bank parking area for 12 additional spaces. We ask that it be Green Bank because we honestly believe we don't need the parking spaces.
And that's based on the current operations and the fact that the applicant's been there for eight years, knows what his parking need is, and understands that this is mostly going to be warehouse, which is not going to generate that parking. So I know that you're, you have, I know that you have visited the site numerous times and that your surveyor was there and you have photos. Has that parking lot ever been full?
Never. My experience with the site is that, number one, because the offices for the existing building are located at the western end, that's where most of the people park. We witnessed eight parking spaces, eight vehicles being parked on the north side of the existing building in the eastern end of that aisle, and five vehicles parked on the street, 13 vehicles.
And was anybody parked in the parking lot?
The eastern parking lot is empty.
Okay, and that was on a typical workday, that wasn't at 3:00 in the morning?
That was on a Friday, Friday afternoon, oh, excuse me, Friday morning in October at around 11:30.
Okay, so essentially, we can't meet the parking requirement based on what it is in the ordinance. We believe that we don't, that what we have today would meet our demand based on what's existing today and what we're adding. And we would ask that, should we get through this, that we not be required to add the impervious coverage unless it's necessary, and as the board is familiar with Green Bank Parking, it would be up to the zoning officer, the planning administrator, to say that you must construct it. It has been fully engineered, and all of your stormwater management takes it into consideration as if it was constructed.
Yes, it has.
Okay. And let's talk about the loading zones and the entrances to the addition of the building, and how trash will be handled.
Okay. There are two separate loading zones. The existing loading zone on the south side of the existing warehouse building, which contain, consists of three true loading spaces that are of a length that brings the typical delivery vehicles, the semi-trailers, out of the right of way of the road. I'm sure you've all experienced driving through the industrial zone where you'll have semi-trailers backed into loading docks, and the trailer is hanging out into the middle of the road. That does not exist in the southern parking area, nor will it exist in the proposed western loading zone. They're designed so that the vehicles are completely removed from the right of way of the road. Each zone contains three loading spaces for semi-trailers. It also contains, each zone contains a compactor pad for solid waste handling. The, there are three entrances to the building, other than, I'm sure there were probably emergency e-res doors, but I'd leave that to the architect to determine. That would only be, only function in case of an extreme emergency. But there are three doorways.
Excuse me.
Sorry, five doorways. I wasn't counting the service doorways to the loading areas. Five doorways into the building, three of which are ADA accessible. We are providing, the southeastern entrance does not need ramping. It's at grade and services as an ADA accessible route to the showroom area in the southeast corner of the building. The existing offices are serviced by a ramp proceeding from the southwest face of the existing building down to the proposed parking along South Roller Road. And the proposed addition has an entrance on its northwest corner, again, with a ramp that goes down to the parking along South Roller Road.
Dave, we need a variance for change of grade. Where are we changing grade and why, and is it going to have any negative drainage impact?
The predominant change in grade is at the loading area. There is a fairly rapid rise of grade from South Roller Road up to the existing building pad elevation. So in order to maintain the same floor elevation between the two buildings, we decided that, number one, for the reasons I said why we wanted to put the loading zone there, but also placing the loading zones there meant we needed to excavate in that area more than the two feet.
Okay, but we're accommodating that in the runoff, and we'll talk about Ben's letter in a minute. With regard to the curb cuts, we have some existing that exceed the 30 feet, and the new proposed ones exceed the 30 feet. One is obviously because we need to be able to put the reloading phase in a compactor bay.
The conventional driveway conforms to, I call the eastern driveway the conventional driveway. It conforms with the municipal standard. It's the loading areas and the proposed parking which exceed the standard for curb opening and width and location. And it's for the, like Ms. Krimko said, the conservative environmental approach of repurposing South Roller Road. That's the, the reason that we're seeking those variances.
Okay, and with regard to the building setback, we're just matching what's existing, and the existing is at 44.5 and 50 is required?
That's correct. Along South Roller Road.
Which is, if you look at the aerial, the backyards of the homes, I think it's Mark Place?
Mark Place, yes.
And there's some significant trees along that area as well?
Buffering as well, correct.
Okay. The side setback we had indicated is to that area of trees, and it's matching what's existing there today?
Correct. As you can tell from the aerial, we're pretty much on the same footprint of disturbance that exists today.
Okay, we are not proposing any new signs?
That's correct.
Okay. We talked about the fact that some of the parking spots are within the right of way, and we're not changing those, we're just proposing to keep them?
Correct.
And that goes with the setback as well? The parking space width, as is typical for a non-retail shopping center, shopping food store facility, we're at nine feet as opposed to 10?
And we will be providing the hairpins, right?
Okay. There's a provision, and I'm not even sure I understand it, Jim, with regards to visitors parking only in the front yard. We have parking in the front yard that's existing and proposed to remain. We're not limiting it just to visitors because we have very few visitors that come to the site. It's just going to be general parking?
I think the intent of the ordinance there was for the other areas of the zone where you had through traffic and wanting to keep the front yards being green.
Understood.
So that they only want to visitor parking in the front yard, not employee parking. And as far as South Roller Road goes, again, that's, it's not a through street. I don't want to get into that, but it's a situation where I don't think it's necessary to have all that landscaping in the front as it would in other sections.
Uh huh.
The curb cuts and the number we talked about, the number of spaces, 77 would be required. We have 31 on site and 23 along Roller Road, which technically can't be counted, but as was offered, and as we'll hear also from the architect and the owner, if the applicant, if the board would like to, with regard to the adequacy of that based on the way these operations work. And it's your understanding that in this current facility, we have somewhere between about eight to 10 warehouse workers?
That's correct, that's my understanding.
Right, and about 15 to 20 depending in the office?
Correct.
And in the current condition, based on the circumstances, there's almost never more than, whatever you said, 15, 20 cars there?
Correct.
Okay. We talked about the loading area, and Jim had recommended in his letter that loading and offloading be limited to not occur from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and the applicant's fine with that. We recognize it, even though we're in industrial zone and even though the ordinance doesn't require it, we are adjacent to these residences, and so we could limit that for the night.
Just out of curiosity, was that, was that in place before this? No?
Mm-mm. Not that I'm aware of. The minimum arc, I'm sorry, minimum landscaped area after subtracting buffers, my guess is, is that we're not at the 25% because once we subtract the buffers, we almost have no landscaping left.
It's, the ordinance is very detailed, shall we say, in the way the various landscape areas are calculated. And, okay, here we go. With the, if you're calculating the required area based upon the buildable lot area, we have... I apologize. Okay, we have... On the total lot area, we have proposed open space, not counting the Green Bank parking, 28.56%. If we limit our calculation on available open space to the buildable lot area-
Meaning excluding all our buffers and where most of our green is?
Correct. Which is essentially the southeastern corner, southeast quadrant of Lot 2, our coverage increases to about 50%. I'm sorry, of the required setback area, actually, I'm sorry, it's closer to 70% because the front, the setback line ends along the south edge- I'm sorry, of the required setback area, actually, I'm sorry, it's closer to 70% because the front, the setback line ends along the south edge.
So we comply?
We comply.
Okay. And the minimum landscaping along the property lines, we'd indicated that, you know, it, because of where the loading and unloading and the existing parking spaces are, it'd be difficult to meet it along the roadway.
Right. But we will provide the double staggered row along the northern.
Okay. Why don't we take a quick timeout? Just, um, so, you know, you guys gave a lot of suggestions, a lot of things you wanted to say. If you want to take a timeout right now and kind of like talk through some points that we might still not be uncomfortable with or haven't been addressed?
I think you, they've hit most of the issues. The one point I did want to make, which is not in my report, and this is for the board's edification, is that the residential area to the immediate north of this entire area of the industrial park was developed, planned and developed long after the industrial park existed. So the, I am not sure why the 150-foot buffer requirement is still in there because this is about the only area in the I-1 zone that's adjacent to a residential area. But when that subdivision was proposed and the ordinance was basically amended to allow for that subdivision, one of the requirements in the ordinance was that they're recognizing that there was a lack of buffering in the industrial zone, that there be a 40-foot buffer required on the residential side. So that, if you look at the aerial, you see that there's a landscaped area all along that property line, the northern property line of the I-1 zone. That's a required buffer area that was established when the residential subdivision was created. So you had a 40-foot buffer plus 50 or various widths within the, within the industrial zone to protect the residences there.
And Mr. Winston, what I was trying to do was go through his letter, offer our testimony on it, and then that way Jim could say whether or not we missed anything. That was all I was trying to do.
Oh, okay.
I was literally going through his letter point by point.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, then I guess continue. It's okay. Yeah.
Um, with regard to street trees again, we can't comply with that based on, um, we can, we can't comply with that based on the fact that we have all of these openings into it, but we can replace any that have, that have died. I almost just said passed away. That have, we can replace, you would like that, Mr. Filia, right? That, any that had, that have died or are not in good condition.
Correct. And they can be relocated throughout the property.
Yeah, I was just going to say, my one suggestion that I just happened to think of, it's not on my report, is that you require nine on roller. You really can't put nine there. But you have six. If you put the other three on rows.
Right. We can meet the number, just not necessarily on each roadway. We spoke at length with regard to the, with regard to the buffer and we've agreed with his suggestion and there was a recommendation that there be no building-mounted lighting on the north side of the building, which we could agree to. There obviously will be just a pedestrian light for the entryway into the building, which the architect will speak to, but we'll have nothing lighting up that area. Dave, there are not many areas where we're putting grass in that doesn't exist already. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's going to be areas of disturbance and there actually is on the landscape plan, to Jim's point, the landscape note number 18, that all disturbed areas will be sotted. It's those that are to remain, undisturbed and remain will be.
So we'll comply with the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, and it appears to me that we meet the tree ordinance. Maybe we were short by one tree and it sounds like if we're adding three more, we're going to meet the tree ordinance. So we don't need a waiver and we don't need to make any payment into the fund.
That's my understanding. And in the past, as we discussed, the double staggered row of evergreen trees, there's allowances for those, even though the evergreen trees don't satisfy the caliper requirement, they are.
The tree ordinance has actually changed and I just learned from another client who wanted to replace dying Leland cypresses along the edge of their property line, they count as trees now. And if you take one of those out, you, if they're six feet or more, 10 feet or more, you have to now replace them as a tree or pay the, pay for it. So, yeah. That's not the site plan ordinance, that's the tree removal ordinance.
Yeah, that's the tree ordinance, yeah. But I have always felt that the Leland cypress should be trees.
Right. So, yeah, the ordinance caught up with it.
I don't want to discuss the definition of tree tonight because we'll be here till tomorrow.
But it is, the coniferous trees are specifically listed and if they're greater than 10 feet, they count. And any replanting has to be six feet. I learned it the hard way. You have to pay $100 per tree removed. So my client has to pay $3,300 to remove 33 dying trees and put in 33 new trees. So, I'm an expert on it now. And there's no, there's no flexibility on that. In any event, with regard to Ben's letter, under four, we can comply with his general comments?
Yes, we can.
And that's informational. And number five is informational. Number six, we can comply with all of that?
That's correct.
And number seven is informational and it, we don't indicate that there's any variances, but it's my understanding that we may not meet it exactly right where the parking is.
That's correct. One bit of information with regard to the maximum uniformity ratio. I looked through the plan extensively to see how we had one illumination level of over eight-foot candles, which existed right below a bollard light on our barrier-free ramp at our northeast corner. Other than that one point, the other maximum point was elevation or illumination 7.4 in the compactor zone. When considering removing that one bollard point, we fall conforming to the 12.
Okay, so essentially we're meeting the intent and purpose and we're certainly not disturbing any neighbors.
Correct. And the purpose of those bollard lights was so we didn't have elevated lights up along the residential properties.
Okay, and obviously should the board approve this, we would get any necessary outside agencies?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I just went over Bill, no, not Bill at all, Ben and Jim.
Yeah.
It's time for the holiday weekend. Ben and Jim's.
I see that, yeah.
Review letters in detail. So now I would ask whether or not we missed anything, if there's anything they'd like further clarification of.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the, we heard testimony about the existing parking use for the site. What is the anticipated parking to be generated by the new section of the building? Is that, is it the same or?
It, it's probably going to be a bit less because there won't be as many additional office users, but there will be probably the same number of, the same number of warehouse users. So it will be similar. So if we're using less than half of our parking lot now, we're confident that we'll have plenty of space for it.
Okay, so I think I heard Dave say that there were about 13 vehicles when he went to the site that one day in October. So even if you double that, that would be 26. And you're providing the 21 onsite spaces plus the, there's 23 spaces that are along the South Roller Road area, which you saw in my report, they're technically not counted towards the onsite parking because they're not entirely on the site. But I don't really have an issue with, with that.
Okay. Okay. And Jim?
I think you got everything. Did you go over trash and recyclable storage?
Yeah, the comp, that's going to be in the building and there's a compactor. And we have a special lane for it.
Did you discuss signage at all?
No signage.
No signage.
She said no signage, yeah.
I did say, yeah.
What about the existing sign on the building?
Remaining.
It's, it's not complete. It's missing letters.
Well, then I'm going to let the architect speak to that because while I go by it, I haven't noticed it. We'll, presumably we'll fix it consistent with whatever was approved. Oh, you know what? I think we might have talked about that. I think that because we're hoping to do this work, we might wait until the work is done before we do it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, so nothing else?
They hit everything.
Okay. Anybody from the board have questions right now for this, their mic?
Just on the parking, you have 23 on South Roller Road. Three of those are handicap positions. Then you have 21 on the other side onsite. But I thought I heard at one, you have 20 office workers and up to 15 factory workers?
No, I didn't. I said about 18 office workers.
I mean, we really have like 10 office workers.
Okay. You're not, we'll get you sworn in after. I'm going to have the applicant be sworn in.
Okay.
And then you can, if it's operational, I think it's best if he answers it.
I'm just trying, because I heard 10 to 20 and then 10 to 15.
Right.
Factory workers. I'm just trying to look at the max.
And as he'll testify, they don't all drive. Some carpool. A lot of the factory workers, I don't, not factory workers, warehouse workers take the bus or, so again, our parking demand is what it is. And even if it was maxed out, we would have enough parking. Plus, how many are we proposing Green Banks?
12.
So we could build the additional 12 if it was necessary. We don't anticipate it, so we'd prefer not to create.
I guess that's where I'm going because it's, we're saying we could, but we're.
So what has typically happened with Green Bank parking is if the board approves it, it would be put in the resolution and there'd be a deed restriction that would have to be filed that would say, in the event the township official, and I think it would be the zoning officer, the planning administrator, determine that those spaces are required because the lot is no longer accommodating it, we'd be required to construct them. So essentially it's keeping it green until they're necessary.
Okay. Anybody else have questions at this point?
I just have.
One more on the parking, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
On the loading zone, I couldn't see in the plans that were submitted, the length of the loading zone, how long are they or what's the size? I didn't see it in any of the reports.
It's, it actually, Mr. Pollutus, if you look on sheet three, it shows us 62 feet all within our property line.
And a tractor-trailer is 72 feet?
No, I think he said it was a semi.
Semis are.
The W50s are, the wheelbase is 50, so 62, accounting for additional length. So on 50-foot box, 10-foot front, 62 feet.
It will fit.
I thought they're 72 feet on the length of semi. We could double check later, but it... I was just concerned because you said it wouldn't go into the road, but.
Well, it certainly wouldn't go into the, into the, it wouldn't go into the cartway. So if I could ask you to look at sheet three, there is a line where is the back of the parking spaces that extend onto South Roller Road. So the cartway, which is the required width for travel, is in between that line and the other existing edge of pavement. So it would be within that. So it would not be within the cartway. It wouldn't be blocking anybody. Is that correct, Dave?
That's correct. And many times in instances like this and the applicant can either confirm or refute, the box is dropped off and the tractor leaves the site.
Yeah, I've seen that. I just, but you said it wouldn't hang out and I was trying to figure out the math. So if it's 62, 10 feet could be hanging out.
Into the right-of-way, but not into the cartway. Correct.
Not into the roadway.
But on the Rose Avenue, that's 62 feet with the, I guess the curbway?
That one's not dimensioned.
The one on Rose Avenue is actually like 67 feet and then 72 gets you right to the curb line.
Right to the curb line.
So again.
And then South Roller is 62, would you say?
Yeah, South Roller is dimensioned and that's correct. 62 feet from the building to the right-of-way line.
But then about another 10 feet, it looks like.
Yeah, and it's the same, 72 feet to the, what would be the curb line, but it's the edge of the, yeah, edge of the travel line.
So it wouldn't be in the travel way?
Correct.
Okay. Dave, do you have a question?
So my question actually was very similar. So I guess my concern is just the, if the emergency vehicles have to get down South Roller Road, that there's not going to be any, you know, even if a tractor-trailer is queuing to drop off and parks in there, is there any way to prevent that so that we don't have that particular issue? I don't know how often the emergency vehicles use this cut-through, but I just, that was my concern, that it was going to be blocking.
Two, two factors. Number one, with three loading bays available for the trucks, we don't anticipate any instance where there wouldn't be an available slot for the truck to immediately enter into the loading area upon visiting the site. Secondly, because the roadway is 30-foot pavement width and a dead end, there would be no opposing traffic that if an emergency vehicle did have to, they could easily bypass any vehicle that might be temporarily, and we're talking temporarily by seconds, that might be placed in the cartway.
Yeah, so I was just concerned about that part, you know. I guess I do want to ask the business owner at some point, you know, what kind of volume are we talking about? Are we getting containers every day? Are we getting trucks in every day?
He'll be my next witness.
Oh, I will wait.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions, just briefly. What is the distance from this site to the nearest bus stop, just out of curiosity?
I believe the closest bus stop is up at the corner of Brielle and Sunset.
So it's two long blocks.
So it's go down Brielle from Sunset to Rose and then.
Oh, bus. I thought you were talking about school bus. I couldn't figure out why it would be here. I understand now.
Actually, I mean, I.
Yeah, so it's the length of Brielle Avenue from Sunset to, to Rose and then from Brielle to Rose.
And then with the new spots and you talked about fully engineering the Green Bank spots.
Correct.
What about having them make ready for EV? Is there any? As part of the engineering, would that, Ben, remind me when that, that triggers, how many spots we're talking about?
I don't think that is required for warehouse use. That's usually for a retail use or for residential. So in this case, I don't think EV spaces are required.
Okay. And then the, just the last one because it came up in an earlier conversation with the, and I'm very excited to hear that not everyone drives their car there. That warms my heart. Just out of curiosity, is there any plan for bike storage with the increase in e-bikes for commuting for folks in town?
You know what? That's a great idea and we're going to just say yes. We'll add a bike rack. In Eaton Town, it's, it's required before you even walk in the door. And you would like Mayor Talarico.
Hey, I'm not looking to move, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, we can add a bike rack. I think that's a good idea.
Anything else for this, um, for this person? Nope? Okay, I think we could, I think we could go on to.
Unless the public has any.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Anybody from the public like to ask a question, make a comment? Actually, just make a comment. Yeah, up here.
I need to ask you a couple of things as well.
Can I swear in?
You can give the mic. My name is.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you state your name, your full name and spell your last for the record?
My name is Sunil Asnani, A-S-N-A-N-I, 11-6 Mark Place in Ocean, New Jersey. So I have a couple of, you know, comments and then a few questions for.
Questions or questions? Both.
I think it's just questions. Right, just give us the questions, yeah.
You know, the Roller Road is an important photo fair and I agree with Mr. Fisher there. You know, EMS and emergency vehicles actually go through, you know, I see them and when we're walking, we have seen cop cars and ambulances go through. I'm a physician myself. So I do need to figure out, you know, how often the trucks are going to be loading and unloading there because they will, you know, because a truck backing up can take up to a minute or two, not seconds, to back up into a loading.
I didn't say seconds, Dr. He said seconds.
I think so. So do you want to ask a question?
So how long will it be taking and will it impact emergency vehicle, which in two minutes could be a significant matter?
Well, first of all, I don't know the frequency of the emergency vehicles using.
I can tell you it's frequent enough to cause.
I don't think, I don't think we want, I don't think we want comment. This is just a question answer. We're not looking for your comment or your expertise on this. We're just looking for you to make questions. Okay?
So the question basically is how frequently will, how frequently will the trucks be loading and unloading to your best knowledge?
We indicated to the owner and operator who testified to Mr. Lettich.
Okay. Is there going to be a variance to the height from what is there right now?
Yeah.
And as far as South Roller is concerned, is there going to be a variance to what is existing right now?
In regard to.
You know, from what is the structure right now, will it be even more proximal to Roller? You know, from what is the structure right now, will it be even more proximal to Roller?
No, we are matching the existing setback with the proposed.
The lot coverage that you requested, three times what is typically permitted in the zoning, does that increase the fire hazard, Mr. Higgins?
No, not, not, in my opinion, I'm not a fire official, there is a report from the fire department.
And I'm going to go through these reports from the emergency personnel to Dave when the doctor's done, because I think they're the ones who have the emergency vehicles, and I'd like to.
Sure.
Reference their comments.
You know, there is existing these two lots, and unfortunately, there are sometimes a truck that is parked.
I'm going to ask you to keep it to the question.
I'm going to come to that.
Okay.
At nights, several times a month, and it's idling overnight.
That would be you, Claire. The condition that we're offering isn't on the property today, so the condition of no trucks delivering at night is something new, only if this board approves it.
Okay, so I'm assuming we are stating that there will be no trucks that will be idling
Correct.
Overnight there at all?
Correct. May I just offer you something? That's against state law, so you could actually call the police and report that trucks are not allowed to idle overnight.
I think my neighbor is here behind me as well, and we have talked about it, and we've almost thought of driving over, but obviously it's dangerous, so we thought of calling the police about that, too.
Yeah, you should call the police if they're, if they're doing that. I know it's not my clients, but it could have been the other one.
Yep.
We called the police for the overnight idling.
Yeah. The, you know, the loading zone on the South Roller, the compactor and so forth, you know, my biggest concern would be, you know, eliminating the quiet use and enjoyment of the property, even when it's done between 6:00 PM and earlier, basically. Was there a acoustic engineer survey done to see what the sound effect would be for these things?
No.
On the South Roller?
No, we're bound by the noise ordinance. We're not asking for any relief from that.
I don't know what that means.
She's saying, she's saying that the noise will fit inside the ordinance that already exists.
Okay. Then the question I would ask, last one basically, would it be much better from a sound perspective to have two, and from the EMS vehicles coming in and out, to have two loading docks on the Rose Avenue as compared to one on Roller? Is it possible?
We're not offering any testimony as to sound, so when, when you're asking about, we can't answer that, because we're, permitted use and the trucks are allowed to be here. So again, we didn't do a sound study, so we can't answer that question.
So let me actually then pose this question to the board, basically, that, you know, for the sake of the emergency vehicles going through the Roller Road, would you consider pushing for two loading docks on the Rose Avenue ingress and egress as compared to one on the South Roller? I'm going to stop there.
I think, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. I think we'll, we'll talk about it. Are you, are you completed with yours? Questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Dave, thank you. Just a couple of questions. We got planner view comments from the fire marshal for District Two, dated, and he reviewed these plans, dated three, five, twenty-four, and he had no comment.
Correct.
So that would indicate to you, he did not have a concern with access.
Correct. Also, just to mention that the buildings are, will, are, and will be sprinkled.
Right, but obviously, he saw that, where the loading zones were in South Roller Road.
Correct.
Traffic Safety Sergeant Martinez, she indicated on three, five, twenty-four, that she reviewed the plans and quote, "I have no recommendations or concerns to propose to the township."
Yes.
So the police department and the fire department both reviewed this and have, are comfortable with the plans.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So getting back to the gentleman's comment and question to us, was anybody having any thoughts about his, his question to consider?
Mr. Chair, I'd like the opportunity to finish my case.
Sure.
Before the board deliberates or makes suggestions, because we haven't heard from the architect yet, and there are reasons why they can't be placed there.
Okay, good. Okay, let's listen to that.
But to your point, Mr. Chair, on his question, is it possible to find out how frequent, I think you were referring to emergency vehicles, you know, is it police? Is it ambulance? Is it possible to find out?
Yeah, well, I guess there's two, yeah, I guess there's two prongs that, is, one is to appreciate the, the volume that occurs with that, and the other is the pros and cons and heartache to be able to move those to the, another place. Right, so I guess, did you want somebody, you want somebody else to kind of talk to that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to say here? Anybody else in the, anybody else in the, have a public comment? Sure. Have any questions?
I speak, Colmer, K-O-L-M-E-R, Eight Mark Place.
Okay, I got to swear in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you just repeat your last name?
K-O-L-M-E-R, Colmer. I live at Eight Mark Place, right behind on the South Roller Road side, so I'm in the west portion here. Okay?
Would you mind pointing at your house, Ms. Colmer, on that exhibit? Okay.
So, my only questions are that the parking that you're talking about, that's going to be for, you said thirteen spaces along South Roller Road?
Twenty-three, in groups of nine and fourteen.
But they're actually on the street, correct?
They are perpendicular to the curb line, yes, on the street.
So why can't we just use the Green Bank for those parking spaces instead of them being on the street and creating additional traffic in that small space? Because once those trucks start loading in backwards, and I think some of the tractor-trailers are fifty-three feet plus the ten, because I know some of them parked there several times this month and the last few months, I just feel like there's just so much traffic going on there, so why can't we just utilize the Green Bank instead of using the street space?
Can I just, can I show you this? Did you have a chance to look at the plan?
Yeah, I was there, not the plan, but I was back there.
No, but, no, no, but that's what I'm asking, so they're not entirely on the street, that's our property line.
Okay.
So there's only a portion, and what I was describing before is the roadway, from where the back of it is to the existing edge of the concrete, this is twenty feet, so it looks like it's forty feet of roadway in that area, Dave? You have a dimension that says twenty feet?
That's correct.
So, again, I'm not an engineer, so I, you know, Ben, is that adequate for the circulation, the forty-foot roadway width?
Yes.
So you don't have an engineering concern with regard to the trucks and any conflict?
No, the, well, the, I think the testimony was that if a truck is queued on South Roller Road, that emergency vehicles wheel to get around it.
Right, and then, the only other question is, and I think once the owner comes up to testify with regard to, when you're talking about traffic, who's actually here? I believe it's only employees, so it's not traffic coming in and out on a regular basis, but I'll let him testify to that.
And then, as far as lighting is concerned, nothing is going to be shining down on South Roller Road, because.
They're all shoebox fixtures with.
And I heard, I heard, but I just don't know what those are, exactly.
They're intended just to, they're LED fixtures intended to put the light on the pavement, not broadcast, they're not wall-mounted fixtures broadcasting out.
Okay.
So, and then we can also agree on a time schedule for those lights to be turned on and off.
Okay, and for, are there any weekend deliveries?
We can't answer that, that's the next witness.
Okay. And then, right now, you're saying it's till 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
I'd like him to, we've, the board planner has asked that we limit deliveries from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, every day of the week. So there can be no nighttime deliveries after six o'clock, and they can't start again till 8:00 AM. That is not in place now to address the last neighbor, which is why there may have been deliveries, and it could continue, because there's no restriction on deliveries in Ocean Township, but if we're approved tonight, we're agreeing to that condition.
Okay. I think that's all I could think about right now, but I'm sure I could always.
So just, just a question, just for our own relative sake here, right now, the way it's structured, is that causing a lot of problems for you?
Well, yeah, because, and I know it's not his fault, but when the trucks are parked there waiting to go into the bay the next morning.
Ours don't go on that side, that's the manufacturer.
Is there anybody else on that road?
Yes, there is, this guy here.
But this is a fence company, is it not, right now?
And again, I think this is a better question for the owner, but as you can see, there's tractor-trailers on their site right now.
But they don't have any doors, right? Or, they don't have any bays for tractor-trailers right now.
Again, I'll have him.
I was on this property.
Okay, I'll, I'll have him testify to that.
Okay, because I've seen the trucks that have been lined up here later in the morning, after they've been there all night, pull into this spot. Okay, so they're there, and they're there overnight, and I'm not comfortable with that, because I have young kids, I don't know who's in the truck, it's idling all night, not that it's super noisy or destructive, but it shouldn't be, that's all.
And we understand that, and I'm just going to offer to the board, we can't control what truckers do, for example, if a trucker decides to park on Brielle Avenue overnight because they didn't want to go buy a hotel room, there's not, it's a public street, so that's governed by the police power of the town. So if they're parking somewhere off-site but not coming to us, there's very little that we can do to control that, except for call the police.
Yeah, that, that I, that I understand.
Right, so, but, as far as when we're going to have activity on our site, we're committing that we will not. I can't control, for example, by my office, which is back in this area also, school buses park there all day long. They don't want to go, so they park their buses, there's one or two buses parked there all the time, it's a public street. So that's all, so that's all I'm offering, but again, the owner's been there for eight years, if you just give him the opportunity to kind of offer the testimony, I'm sure he can answer for you, but other than that.
What is, what is the warehouse? What is the storage of the warehouse?
It's beauty supply, beauty and health supply.
Okay. And, and one of my only other issues, too, and maybe this is not a question, and I know I'm not supposed to make comments, but when, when we park here, whether it belongs to them or not, they're, they're brushing up against all of those trees in that area here along South Roller Road on the residential side. So, all of those trees are getting damaged, and there are actually trees that belong to both myself and him, and the third house, which is over here, okay? So I don't know how we can fix that as a town, I don't think it's on this actual owner, but it's just something to take into consideration, since there will be more tractor-trailer traffic back there.
Can I just ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
When you say they're brushing against it, are the trees somehow growing? Oh, so you're talking about the canopy they're brushing against? Well, maybe we could, maybe the town could, Public Works could maybe trim.
Well, that's my question, is, are they your trees or they the township's trees?
No, they're the township's trees, but they also, the township's trees also touch our trees because of the growth, right?
Well, if they're the township's trees, then we can, you know, discuss with Public Works and/or contractor to fix the trees.
And one truck happened to hit my fence once, so I'm just concerned about all the extra traffic back there that we don't necessarily need, from either the cars that park there or the trucks that go there, and I understand that this is, needs to happen, but I just, you know, some, some type of care needs to be presented for the neighbors on this side, especially.
I just have a quick question, so Colleen, is it possible to maybe put some signage up here so these truckers understand that this is not, you know, I know we have our rules, but maybe we need some signage from the township side to say, hey, no idling, no overnight parking?
I think that has to be, actually, the council has to do that, not Colleen.
That's why I'm asking.
Probably could put, could stripe the one side of the street saying, no parking.
Yeah.
I think we should formally recommend to the, to the council that we do this, right? That, I know we have a council member.
Our applicant would love that also.
But I think that would be appropriate, right? That we recommend the governing body.
Yeah, so I'll bring that up to the council, you know, just, if it's going to be, it's obviously an ongoing problem, so.
Yeah, it is.
You know, I'm sure these truckers don't know what time they're going to get into a place, they're stuck, they don't want to go anywhere, I don't know why they park on that street, but, you know, but, but I do encourage you, by the way, just from the township side of the fence, if you have an issue, call the police.
I will.
Especially, I mean, if it's waking you up.
I hate to bother them for silly things, but.
So, we've been to a bunch of lectures recently, they've made it clear, they're not to be, you can call them, they have a non-emergency number, five-three-one-eight-hundred, feel free to use that number, it takes it out of the 911 system, and they would be glad to service anything you have, if you have a problem.
In case you didn't realize, Dr. Fisher's on the council.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for, thanks for sharing that with us. Okay, I think we can hear from.
Come on up, Jay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
And can you state your full name and spell your last for the record?
Jacob Cohen.
Speak into the mic.
Jacob Cohen, C-O-H-E-N.
Okay, and Jay, you are, you can have a seat. Jay, you're a principal in the company that owns the land, that purchased the land next door, and that owns the company that operates there, what's the name of the company?
Nationwide Campus Corp.
Okay, and I had represented, but just to confirm, it's a warehouse and distribution for health and.
Branded Health and Beauty, eh?
Okay. And with regard to the number of deliveries that come during the day and how it functions, in your current loca, in the current situation, what do you have?
So on average, two to three containers a day, pretty much, sometimes it could be one, sometimes it could be five, but on average, two to three.
Okay, and when you say containers, do the trucks come, drop off the container and leave?
Sometimes, but typically the trucks, they do fit in within the driveway space, and they're not blocking the street.
Okay, so they might not, they might be extending a little bit over your property line, but what you're saying is, they're not going into the roadway?
Nope.
Okay, and are you familiar with trucks idling overnight or issues along?
Yeah, so we're seeing a lot of people use that dead end, that are not, nothing to do with our company, they're just parking there, we just had, I called the police actually two weeks ago, we had one of our secretaries, they're just parking, it had nothing to do with my company, they're just trucks in the area that are parking.
But it is possible that one of them were parking there and then used your.
It's possible, but we know there's, there was someone that was parking there, sleeping there, and using that as a sleeping place, nothing to do with our company, and we called the police, and they came, they told the guy, you can't sleep here, we don't know why they're using that, you know, why they picked that dead end.
Okay, and.
Let me ask a question, how often have you seen that?
In the last month, often.
Often is ten times?
No, I'm saying it's one truck, there's one guy that's doing it.
One, one guy keeps doing it.
So he had a van, he was sleeping in there, one of the guys came out of my, out of our office, and he got worried that he was going to get, like, we got scared for him, yeah. Because we don't know if they're going, you know, they're going to rob us, they're going to, we don't know what's happening. So one of my workers came out at six from the office, and he was, guy just opens the car, like, you know, we thought he was going to attack him, you know? But he was just sleeping in the truck, you know, and then his van.
Right, so this is good for anybody?
No, we don't want, if you could put something there that they don't park, it's nothing to do with our company, it's not our deliveries.
I understand.
No, no, I get, yeah.
But the concern is there, and it's.
It's, it's there.
At least fifteen times a month where there's a truck.
In the last month or two, I've seen it often.
Okay.
Before that, I haven't seen it, they must have found the spot, and they're just picking that spot.
Okay, so we might also, also even just recommend it gets policed a little, right?
Yeah, we called the police, the police went there, he told them, you can't do that, he left, and then he came back like two days later, like, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, Jay, another question is, what was the operation in the building next to you that you just bought?
It was a manufact, steel fabricator.
Okay. And did they have trucks in and out of that driveway?
A lot of trucks, and when they operated, my building was shake, like, they are, you know, it was very noisy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it, there was a lot of activity as compared to your three loading zones that you're proposing here?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and you said, so if you have, if you have up to three, you said three deliveries a day?
I mean, two to three on average, yeah.
Okay, so if that's at those three loading zones, do you expect the same at the other one?
It should be similar, yes, it should be. And I know you had mentioned about the ton, you had asked, minutes, what, typically it's 15, 20, maybe 15, 20 seconds, they back up, they're done. And even with the emergency, you were saying about the emergency blockage, my office faces South Roller Road. I see it maybe once or twice a day, if that, where the guy, the fire marshal typically drives in or a police, it's once or twice a day, and I'm facing that office.
With the lights on?
No, I'm saying with, no, no lights on, just driving through.
Okay, but what I'm saying is-
There's no activity, you know?
Right, understood. So what you're proposing by way of adding this warehouse, most of the intensity of the work is going to be inside the warehouse. It's not a lot of truck traffic back and forth.
No, not at all.
Okay, and with regard to the employees, I had attempted to answer, and I didn't do a great job, with regard to, you know, your number of employees and how many cars are typically out there?
Yeah, so we have right now eight to 10 office worker, right now, at this time, eight?
I thought it was 18.
No, eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have eight office workers, and we have roughly around 10 to 12 warehouse workers. The warehouse workers, we have three or four that come together, you know, they come from Neptune or Asbury, they drive together, so, or they take a bus, some of them take a bus, they have an Uber, but we don't even use, I would say, 30% of our parking. It's pretty much empty, which is not-
And you expect that-
What's the projected?
I mean, with the new additional space, probably, I would say maybe possibly another six to eight workers, so maybe another six to eight cars, if they all drive. But it might, you know, typically, most of the workers don't, they come together, you know?
Okay, so again, you're not, you're doing this to create more storage, not to necessarily create more people in the building?
Correct, it's more storage, yeah, we need more warehouse space, yeah.
Are there any more questions for?
I want them to answer the lights too, the light thing.
What about it?
Because she was thinking about the lights.
You could, you could, you could talk.
No, so the warehouse we have now-
Just grab that mic, Jay. No, 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 that one up there.
You had mentioned something about the lights, right? So the lights, right now, we have those lights facing down at our existing building now. So if you're not having issues with the lighting now, that's what's there now, you know? So what we're planning to propose, it's the same exact ones we have now. Yeah.
Okay, good. Before I say anything, anybody have any comments that they, anything they want to ask? Did you want to get back to your question, Mike, or do you already feel like you got answered?
I think because I screwed up by 10, I think that might have made the math work a little bit better.
I was just trying to figure out, because when I was, when I drove by the building per, you know, I saw a number of cars in the street, and then I saw it on Google Maps, and, you know, I didn't drive on it, I was just, I was trying to figure out, they're on South Roller Road, but you have plenty of parking, and I, you know, I think there was about five or six, and then Google Maps has about six cars on that Roller Road too.
So on Roller, on South Roller Road, so a lot of the workers are, three or four cars are parking on, currently there now on the street.
And that's because the office door is there?
The office door is there, you know, so on the other side, which is Rose, it's a lot of the gymnastics company, nothing to do with my company.
Dave, did you have anything you want to ask?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. So just trying to understand your business a little bit, so are you more of a wholesale distributor, or you're not making vats of, you know, cosmetics and things like that?
No, we're not a manufacturer, we're a distributor.
You're a distributor, so just boxes and-
Storage pallets come in, we ship, and that's it.
You ship, comes in, goes out the door. Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's really all the questions I had.
So I was, yeah, I just want to, I just want to get back to the drivers.
Yeah.
So in, so was there, was there some perception that maybe the drivers were part of the people delivering to the steel group that you're acquiring?
They did have trucks coming there. The guy that's there now, that she's, that the neighbors, that the neighbors referring to, I don't believe it's the fence company, I think someone found that dead end.
Okay, so you think it's a rogue, a rogue person that-
I don't, because I called my, the fence guy happens to be my tenant, so I called him, and he's like, Jay, I don't know who it is, so we called the police.
Okay, so the current, so the current environment that we think could be is that there will be less trucks kind of coming in and out, because they won't be in that area?
Correct.
Right? And there'll be less noise, less rumbling, right, from-
I mean, to be honest with you, there's no noise, you know?
No, I mean, from, because what you got from the other trucks, you said, when those people pulled in, it kind of even rumbled your-
No, 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 he had said it when they were doing the manufacture, it was a metal fabricator, so when they were, when they were doing the work in their building, it was shaking.
Oh, it was rumbling, it was shaking yours, okay.
Not the trucks, no, the steel fabricator, when he would manufacture, my building was shaking.
Oh, okay.
My floor was shaking in my building.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what else, what else do we need to talk about to kind of address?
I don't know if it was said before, I apologize if you did. Can you talk about the frequency of the deliveries?
Yeah, as far as the trucks?
Yeah.
It's two to three trucks on average right now.
Per day?
Per day.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and he does-
I mean, sometimes we'll have five, sometimes we'll have one, but on average, two to three.
Right, and is there, is there a certain time of the day when this occurs?
As far as when they come?
Yeah.
It could be anytime between nine and five, it's not-
Okay.
Oh, and one of the questions was, are you open on the weekends?
So we're not, we're not open on the weekends, and typically, right now, we have most trucks coming between nine to three, nine to four, because we don't want to stay past five.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're telling, again, do they listen to us? Would they get stuck in traffic? Anything's possible, but on average, we don't want them coming past four.
Sounds like you need to put the clamps on these guys.
They don't listen, you know, truckers don't listen to us, so we try our best, yeah.
Okay, I do have the architect as well.
Well, first off, anything that we want to, anything that you gentlemen want to ask that I, about this?
The only question I have, and I want to open up a can of worms here.
Then don't.
If you don't have that many employees, how come you need that many spaces on Roller Road? Is it because your offices are there?
Our office is on Roller Road, yeah, so it's just easier, just easier access, they don't want to, you know?
Then I'll seal up the can of worms.
Yeah, no, in the rain, it would be terrible to have to walk all the way around.
It's snow, it's dangerous.
Anything for me, Ben?
No, that was kind of similar to what I was going to ask.
Okay, so there was one question that was left out, which was about having the loading docks all on the-
That would be the architect, Mr. Wayne, because he's going to go through the interior layout and why it wouldn't work.
Right, okay, so any other questions for the owner here? No? Why don't we, why don't we take some time and actually listen to the architect, and we can talk about the feasibility, if that even made sense to consider that? Oh, by the way, any questions for the public that they want to ask you? Sure, come up to the mic again.
You know, I think you said that right now the deliveries are between one to five a day. What's projected?
It's going to be the same thing.
Okay, and then the compactor, are we going to be doing it during the same hours too? Is it going to make noise as well?
The compactor doesn't really make-
Do you have the compactor now?
Yeah.
Do they have it now?
Do you hear noise right now from them?
You know, the truck kills everything else.
I mean, I don't really hear noise from the truckers. I mean, my office is on that, my office is on the loading dock.
Okay, so it's not an argument, but it's fine.
So the question was the, was the lighting timer addressed? I can't even remember, this has been going on for so long.
We would just put off the lighting after, an hour after business, we'll do it on a timer.
Okay, so-
But we have the timer now. It's operating, we have a timer now in our building now.
I guess just for the record, though, for this, though, that the time would be, it would have to be off one hour after the close of business, right? And it would turn back on, I guess, an hour prior, is that, yeah, to the start of business?
No, there'd be security lighting in there.
We have lights right now on now.
What we would suggest, Mr. Manell, is that we would agree to turn off a majority of the lights and just work with Ben as is typical, what lights would need to remain on for security lighting.
The ordinance has requirements on what lights need, or how much lighting needs to remain in the parking lot areas overnight for security, and then whatever other site lighting the ordinance recommends.
I think, Ms. Krimko, what you said is perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, great, why don't we-
David, come on down.
Go to the next person.
The other David.
A lot of Davids.
A lot of Davids. Have you sworn and get started?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your full name and spell your last for the record?
David Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S.
Dave, you're a licensed architect, State of New Jersey?
I am.
Your license is in good standing?
It is.
You've appeared here a million times?
A few.
Okay, we'd submit him as an expert.
We accept you as an expert, even though you've probably only been here two million times, right?
Dave, obviously, you can briefly go over how the building's going to match with existing, and I think the concern is how it's going to function on the inside and why the loading needs to be where it is.
Okay, I'll start. This is just a colorized version of the drawings that you guys all received. It's not a new drawing, it's just been colorized. I'm going to run through the exterior of it really quick. The existing building has a blue metal panel on the top part of the building and a white metal panel on the bottom, so we felt it was logical just to maintain that and try to make this addition look like it had always been there as part of the building. So we carried those lines across and used the blue on the top and the white on the bottom, and that kind of wraps around all three sides. On the back two sides, we do have some low masonry, because we have some grating that has to happen, and we don't want those metal panels down too close to the earth, so we have that kind of as a little bit of a water table on the bottom. And what we did is we, because we were kind of budding two buildings together, we dropped a section in the middle to try to create a little bit of architectural relief, so that that elevation didn't look so big and long. It also created a good area for us to deal with snowdrift, and then we also kind of matched the office element that exists today in our new addition, and tried to line those up so that those two elements made sense with each other. In terms of the plan, again, same, same kind of thing, if you look on the Roller Road side, we have the office, the low office piece projects forward towards Roller Road. We did the same thing with ours. The reason that we didn't just kind of consolidate all of this office and put the loading up on the north side was so that we could use this to kind of pull our loading away from the residential use and buffer, buffer that a little bit, so the office is up here. I mean, it's a general kind of rule we try to follow. We try to get about 10% of office as an accessory to a warehouse. We think that, you know, that gives a little bit of flexibility in the building, so that's kind of why we laid it out the way we laid it out. The reason that we didn't add to the Rose Avenue loading docks is if you look, the building projects forward in this area, so we won't have that length that we would have at the recessed docks, so if we added docks along here, they would, the truck could be sticking out into the road.
But also, Dave, the variance as it relates to parking and loading is not because we have loading in that area, we're allowed to have loading in that area. It's just that there's no driveway, so if we inset the loading a little and created a small driveway, it would be fully compliant.
Right.
So, I mean, I just, so the board understands, this is an industrial zone, we're allowed to have loading there, and it's up against a street, so again, because of that, we're willing to limit it so it's not at night, because we do recognize the sensitivity of the residential there. But realistically, loading in that area is permitted, and the ordinance doesn't restrict loading overnight. That's something that we're willingly agreeing to, so I think that, you know, as far as mitigating any impact, I think that's the best mitigation you can have than having the existing loading going 24/7.
Right, but I don't, just to accentuate the question, the question was, could it be, could those loading things be moved into the front of that other building? And your thing was that basically, structurally, the whole thing would have to be restructured to somehow to accommodate that?
Right.
And it also wouldn't be proximate to the warehouse that it's going to?
Yeah, obviously, we're only proposing a small opening between the existing building and to the addition, so you would start to bottleneck things that, as you tried to move products through the building, you would be bottlenecking here, so by having the loading on the addition side, you have good circulation in the building here, you still have the existing good circulation that you have today.
So is it a fair statement to say, or is it not a fair statement to say, that it helps the speed of the unloading by having the two different docks in different places?
It does, because obviously, all of that material has to come off the truck with a forklift and has to move to where it has to be set in the building, so if you can kind of, you know, keep the docks close to where you're storing, you can turn that truck over faster, because you can make more trips quicker.
Okay.
And also, it has less conflict with trucks coming in and out of the loading dock. If you have six next to each other, there's more of a chance of conflict than if you have them broken up three and three.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Cohen?
Is there anything else you wanted to share, or is that-
That was my quick version.
Okay, that was your quick version, okay. Anybody else, anybody have any questions for the-
Just on the loading dock on the Rose Avenue, I guess I'm still having a hard time there. Is it, is the trucks going to be protruding into the street, 72 feet?
They exist today.
And if they are, can you just move the loading dock back?
We're not proposing any loading docks on Rose Avenue, they exist here today.
I'm sorry, South Roller Road. So I believe the testimony from Dave was that the truck fits in this zone and doesn't stick into the cartway.
So currently, there's a 40-foot pavement width on South Roller Road. The proposal is to eliminate the curb line and put the parking spaces and the loading areas on that side. The 72 feet that you're talking about extends from the building to the edge of the traveled way, which is where the curb line is now, so there's no reduction in the pavement width from what they're proposing.
So if I've worked there and I parked my car there in a truck, the loading dock, we'd be even with each other?
Yes.
Technically, yeah.
Yeah, so, right, exactly, so a car parked in one of the parking spaces and a truck parked in the loading area would extend out to the same distance.
Same thing, the truck's not going to be sticking, that was my concern, and that's the-
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, and-
Yeah, just a quick one. Any intention of putting solar on the roof of either the new or the existing building?
We try to always make our additions solar-ready, so there's not an immediate plan to put solar. What we do is we design collateral load into the structure, so that if solar panels ever want to go on there, the structure's prepared for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the architect? No? Anybody from the public have any questions they'd like to ask? No? Okay. Anybody else you'd like to-
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, okay, so just in general, any comment about anything from our board, any questions we have, anything for the, for our professionals?
Yeah, did, just a quick question. Ben, did we cover your concerns about the stormwater management system?
Yeah, we said we would agree to everything.
Okay, yes.
I tried to do that in the beginning to knock off anything we agree with, so it's-
The things you kind of agreed with quickly, people kind of forgot a little bit.
I'll go a little slower next time.
My stormwater comments, just so the board knows, a lot of them are pretty technical, and they're not significant to the fact, to the point where they're going to change anything with regards to the layout or the site or anything like that. It's more providing additional information about soil boring information and additional grades on the plans and things like that.
Okay, so let me just open this up one more time to the public, to ask if there are any other questions that you have. Come on up. Hang on to you.
You can have a seat.
I think, as of present, the loading and unloading still, I think, I forget your name.
My name?
Yes.
Oh, Jen.
Jen. Jen was saying that it happens 24/7. It doesn't. I think it's still-
I didn't indicate it would happen 24/7. I indicated it could, because there's no limitation on it.
I think, at least in the present state, it's happening in the morning hours as well, maybe because of the ordinance or whatever. I'm not aware of that, but at least it is. I just wanted to put that out.
And just to clarify, so you understood what I meant? Right now, our operator has no need to go 24/7. If he sold his building, if he couldn't put this addition on and sold his building tomorrow and went to find another place, another warehouse user could come in and operate 24/7. That's what I was suggesting, not that we were or are or plan on it.
Then I would request the-
Part of the stipulation, if this does get approved, would be that the operation hours can only be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's the, that's the stipulation.
The delivery hours.
Delivery, the delivery hours, that's the stipulation.
Fair enough, okay, and am I, because I thought there was a loading dock on Rose Avenue as well.
There is, and that one will be limited as well.
Limited as in removed?
No, as in six, as in 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, all right.
No trucks will be able to enter before 6:00, and they have to be out of, before 8:00, they have to be out of there before 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, someone could leave a container there.
They could leave it there, right.
No, 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 and that's correct. The loading or unloading?
Loading or unloading, right.
Exactly.
Now, how long does loading and unloading take typically? Typical?
I think, I think he said it was 15 to 20, 15 to 20 minutes, I thought it was.
And I think the testimony was, Doctor, that sometimes the canister actually gets left there, and then his, his workers can unload and unload without the truck there, meaning the, what's it called, the? Container.
I was just wondering why we need more than one, but I think that would be the reason, probably.
Because they leave it, and then that way the trucks get out of there, and then his employees can move things around.
Good. All your questions answered?
Sort of.
Sort of, okay. Anybody else have any? No? Okay. So before I make, before we get a motion here, and there's no other comments or questions that we have here, correct? Okay, so I guess there's a number of things that we've kind of talked about, and so Ryan, do you feel like you have our ability to memorialize these things, to kind of discuss the things we agreed on?
The only two potential conditions that I had, which we could discuss, would be whether the approval would be subject to the applicant obtaining approval from the township for the parking spots extending into the right of way.
We would have to.
Yeah, and another one that I think would have to be done anyway, but would be subject to the recording of a deed of consolidation.
Yep, we agreed to that.
To new lot number.
Right, and also the, so it would be compliance with Jim and Ben's letters, as was testified, adding a bike rack, green banking the parking, and having a deed restriction as it relates to having to construct it if instructed by the town, and limiting the hours of, the hours of delivery, truck delivery from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, and Colleen, we're going to look into if we can figure out a way to have either signage or- Is that, you're going to take that as your follow-up?
I'm going to take care of that.
Okay, and then one of the other things we did talk about was potentially to have some kind of police patrol in this regard as well, correct?
I will send an email tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Okay, so with that, would somebody, did we cover everything?
Just the one other condition that I had noted is, no building-mounted lighting will be provided on the north side of the building?
Correct.